Early in the morning and then during the week I'll do it after work when it's cooler.
How many cords do you go to?
So right on eighteen.
Eight?
I heat off the stone house. That's about forty, forty-eight hundred square feet of old, two-hundred-year-old houses that I heat. But it's, it's in good heat.
Yeah, it feels good.
Yeah.
I have that outside and it's outdoors, so it's not an insurance issue, so don't worry about burning the house down.
Okay, so you have one of those outdoors.
My daughter, in addition to the oil that they have, uses a pellet stove. And they really like it. Boy, does that warm the place up. It's, it's pretty dry, but they put a sort of fire spread. Well, they've got those heat exchangers. And they like that. They go and pick up the pellets at.
It's under the deck, yes.
The hardware store or.
So what Jeff is gonna do.
Hope depot place.
What he's gonna do.
Storm in their garage. We just have oil, not hot air. We moved that house. And then we put a wood first. I mean, because I still had the fence for the hot air. We don't have that anymore.
So they, he said.
Plus they were like five-foot long, so we had to put it there. Yeah.
He said that way if anything ever happens, you just can get to it.
It could have been the pipe broken, it could have been this and all kinds of stuff. Everybody's here.
Oh, we are.
Wow.
Wow, with four minutes to spare.
It's exciting.
I will tell you, Arnie, that guy was amazing.
The what?
That guy was great. Dennis from April, April, April.
Bill, we did turn on the heat when we got here. So you're warming them up up here.
He was one of his, so his truck said he's got, so that he's also.
That's right.
He's got Wal-Mart in there. And they responded very quickly because they live in. But.
I would think you can't even pump a tank for that.
Recording in progress.
And I don't think that was any special discount because I didn't really know them.
Yeah. In progress. Be careful. Mics are on, everything's hot. Don't say something, anything foolish right now.
Yes, sir.
Hot mics. It's quiet.
I'm gonna go back away.
What?
I'm gonna go away again. Okie dokie. Wonder what?
It's having a hard time keeping up and I don't hear no noise from that one to do.
Okay, all right.
Whatever it is. So, I'm, yeah, I, I. Yeah, usually they're both cracking and it seems like it's struggling to keep up.
Okay.
It's six o'clock and I'd like to call the meeting to order. Can we all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
I'd like to welcome everyone to our February sixteenth Select Board meeting. Usually their introductions are, some of the Select Board members are on Zoom, some are in person. I think this is the first time it's been in a while that five members are in the same room. The first item on our agenda is to approve our minutes from January twenty-eighth. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from January twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-two.
I'll second it.
Lee is the motion and Lee is the second. Any corrections, changes, omissions, errors? Anybody have anything on the minutes of January twenty-eighth?
I have none.
Excuse, excuse me, just so you know, I can hear you, but it's, there's something not right with the sound. I don't know how it is for Sapa, but it's like a, just a lot of extra noise.
Let me, Scott Blair, are you out there? Can you hear us and what's the quality?
Yeah, I'm out here. It's kind of echoey and not too clear.
So that might be a problem in general for everybody, so I, I, I don't know what to do, do about it on this end.
You go ahead and do your minutes and I'll mess with it.
Not at this time, Arnie.
No, everybody is okay with the January twenty-eighth minutes? All those in favor of approving the minutes as written, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? And a motion to accept our February second minutes. So move. So Lee's the motion and Heather's the second. Any changes, corrections, omissions, errors, anything on those?
I have none.
That's, that's perfect. The sound is good now.
Julie worked her magic.
Thank you, Julie.
Technical wizard.
Welcome.
Why we pay her the big bucks, right?
One of the settings.
Oh. So I, I have on page, oh, sorry, page, uh, number thirty, line thirty. Which page, Lee? First page. The town of Windsor has downed it twice now. I think done, D-O-N-E. It's just a typo. That's all I found in that one.
Anything else, anybody? All those in favor of approving the minutes with the correction, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Next item on our agenda is citizens' comments. If there was someone here that would like to address the board regarding an issue that is not on the agenda, now would be the time to do so. Are there any citizens' comments? Anybody out in our Zoom world?
I'll make one.
Go ahead, Linda.
This isn't a big issue, but y'all are talking about making the village more walkable or increasing the walkability. And I just want to point out that the green is not walkable. The lane that is given to walking is covered by ice and snow most of the year. It's got placards in it from the stores and if one was, even if the, if it was cleared, it's dangerous because of the ice falling from the roof. So you are, if you're walking the green, you are walking in the same lane as the cars. And if that's the case, it's not walkable. So when, if y'all are considering redesigning the green or revamping it, I just, it would be nice if you took that into consideration.
Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you for that observation. It's, it's important. I mean, you, for the people that live on the green, they're the ones that are telling us what's going on and it's, it's useful information. Thank you. Any other citizens' comments? And up to old business. So Julie, can you take us through our old business list?
I can. And actually, the first item on there is about the green. You may recall that Mr. Satovia, who is a relatively new property owner in Chester, generously offered to purchase two benches for the green. We have met, myself along with Scott from Trigonus and Chester Townscape Ladies and Mr. Satovia about, Scott had done up some mock drawings of where some benches might make sense for, for Mr. Satovia to kind of pick. The discussion led to something that I've been thinking about anyway, and Scott and I have talked about several times, which is kind of reworking the green. There's been a lot of presentations or discussions over the years about changes to the green, how to beautify the green, those types of things. And we talked for a long time about a master plan of the green itself. We didn't, the, the green was part of the Village Center Master Plan, but we didn't focus heavily on that grassed area because we felt like it was a discussion unto itself. The green in front of the Academy Building, behind the Academy Building, over by the info booth, that's all kind of one unique area. And so I'm kind of feeling like maybe it's time to start that discussion. There's been a lot of different things brought up over the years, making a monument park, having better seating. I mean, there's been all kinds of things thrown around over the years. So I, I'm gonna start conversations with Scott. There'll be more coming your way. Obviously, it would need to be very community-driven as to what people want to see. That's coming, but for now, what we have decided is Mr. Satovia would like to put those benches on the Academy Building side of the property, on either side of that walkway that goes up, so that you can sit there, look at the green, sit in the shade on the Academy Building, look, and will look at the green and see the activity. He felt like that would be the most inviting of places in his viewpoint. So as long as there is no objections on your part, that's, that's what we will move forward with. The benches are in, they're being stored down at the treatment plant right now, waiting to be assembled for the spring. They will again go on, just like the one in front of the information booth, they will go on a granite slab from the pit, leftover slabs from the pit, and have that same look as we've been putting out around Tuchel.
When I was reading your thoughts about that, I thought it sounded really nice because that's a very peaceful place over there.
Yeah.
And shade with the trees and those kinds of things. And even if we have Get Back to Our Music Series and we use that space, those, there are two benches some people might like to sit in.
Absolutely, and I think we'll place them so that they don't get in the, you know, they're not as intrusive for when that lawn is used.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you, Julie.
For the music series, they'll be facing the green. I think he's gonna kind of angle them a little bit, but we just don't want them to be in the way when there's other events, but it'll be.
Oh, that's, that sounds very nice. Thank you, Mr. Satovia.
And then the only other item for old business that I have at this time is just updating you on different grant applications that are being applied for now. One of them, of course, is on the agenda tonight. That one requires sign-off from the board. A lot of them have to do with fire ambulance, police, communication, just routine equipment, trying to get more funded and out of the budget that we possibly can this year while there, while there's so much funding around. The Better Places Grant, there will be more coming on that. At this time, both Deirdre and I attended a Better Places Workshop. This is, this is, we've never done anything like this. It's, it's a, it's a crowdfunding project. And we've never entertained one in Chester that I am aware of. But the state with some of the funding that they have and ARPA funding that they have, have a forty thousand dollar grant. We would be crowdfunding, it's a two-to-one, so we would be crowdfunding twenty thousand to get their forty thousand to make a sixty thousand dollar project. And it's, it's for Village Center and downtown properties only. And what they, what the library would like to do is create an outdoor space in, at the library. And they've got some really great ideas. I think it would be an awesome addition. And so we've done the training now, we're gonna start having some more conversations and really fine-tune, so we'll be back to you with that. But that is definitely something new that we have never done before, and if it worked for Chester, there are certainly lots of opportunities for those types of projects.
So I, my question would be, what, I mean, they already have a nice outdoor space back there, but do they have more that they aren't using?
What they would like to do is have, first of all, re, kind of redo the parking, which that whole parking area needs to be repaved. It's, it's a mess.
Oh, that's true. Yeah, that should happen.
It would be that, it would be redoing the ramp in the front.
Okay.
Is what we would like to do as well, but then in the back, it's adding more of a patio, maybe a pergola where people can sit outside, read, they can do children's programs outside. That type of a space. I mean, it's a beautiful yard, but making it more of a benches and, and places for people to sit and read outside and, like I said, children's programs outside. And they've got a lot of really good ideas.
That's, yeah, it sounds lovely.
I think it'd be a nice addition.
Yep, I agree.
To that. So there'll be more coming. Before we get too far along, we'll be presenting more on that. And then the other grants at this point are large structures grants for highway. So it's just giving you an update where we're at with that stuff.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
I would like to echo what you said in thanking.
Mr. Satovia.
Satovia.
Satovia for the benches.
Yes.
That was a very nice gesture.
He's also wanted to donate a couple of trees, we're holding off on that. That's what's kind of started the conversation about, before we add more to the green, let's, what is our long-term plan?
Nice.
Yeah, really nice.
Anybody, any old business items I would like to bring up? All set. Next item is our continuing discussion regarding the cannabis opt-in vote that will be happening, happening on Town Meeting Day, which is what, March first this year?
March first.
The informational meeting will be February twenty-eighth, that Monday evening, after the regular town meeting. And it's by Australian ballot, by absentee ballot, if you want to vote early. It's available. I think you just have to notify the town hall and they'll send it out to you.
Yep.
You can also come in, right?
Absolutely. Yep, absolutely.
There were some questions that we had from our last meeting. And I believe, Julie, we did get the answers to the three questions that we had.
Yes.
One of them was about the five-foot, five-hundred-foot distance.
Right.
A retail establishment would be allowed to, to be, and it was within five-hundred feet of a school zone.
Well, the school property, so that was a.
The question was whether it was the school zone or the school property, or where it was, and it seems like it's the school property.
Actually, Arnie, I asked for some clarification on that from somebody who's part of the Cannabis Control Board because the language says a butter to a school property. So that would necessarily mean that if it was across the street or not in a butter, it could still be within that five-hundred foot zone. So I asked for clarification. I actually had several questions for this young lady and I hadn't heard back on that particular issue other than that it is a budding property within five-hundred feet of the budding.
But it's a budding or five-hundred, I would say.
No, it says five-hundred feet of an abutting property.
So you can have a property across the street a hundred feet and it wouldn't, it wouldn't apply?
That's my understanding. So let me just, let me just read you. The question I asked is regarding this distance. And I have to correct something I said because I thought it was twelve-hundred feet for alcohol sales, but that was an old regulation, it's no longer in effect. But the question is the buffer zone, I said, thanks for the note. I scoured the entire chapter eighty-four, is not able to find anything related to a buffer zone, only that there are penalties for selling to minors. And she said, here's a relevant language from ATVSA four-two-three-seven-D. It says, and I quote, "Abutting school property, the selling or dispensing of a regulated drug to a person on property abutting school property is a violation under this section only if it occurs within five-hundred feet of the school property. Property shall be considered abutting school property if, one, it shares a boundary with school property, or, two, it is adjacent to school property and is separated only by a river stream or public highway." This is our only current rule around buffer zones. So the question I then asked was, does, is that a budding? Is there any way around that? Because like you, if it's right across the street, I mean, it does say public highway, so maybe that would make that across the street within fifty feet or whatever it is out of compliance, but it's not clear based on the language in the regulations.
Yeah, and I, I was thinking that it was the more stricter of the two, which meant that it was either an abutting property or within five-hundred feet.
That's, that's what I thought. That's not what the language says.
Because otherwise it doesn't make any sense.
Right.
Because if you're not abutting and you got a little strip of land between you, ten feet, and then it's your property, then it doesn't apply. Well, it, it doesn't. And I would hope that the answer to that is the more stricter of the two, which is a budding or five-hundred, whichever is more.
Right, and I'm still waiting for an answer to that question because I did ask that question.
Keep us updated.
Along with several others. Yeah, please, because Susan Senning is one who sent us information on February third and only include the five-hundred distance from schools for regulated drugs in Title eighteen that you've referenced below. It's a five-hundred-foot distance.
Well, we can get a clarification on that.
Yep.
And then we'll have it for the informational meeting that, that next, that Monday, February twenty-eighth and stuff. But I would, I still assume, and I would go with the, the more stringent of the two.
Yeah, and, and the issue is, Arnie, that we have no say in that matter.
No.
It's the state.
That's a state statute.
Passing those regulations or, you know, dictating what we can or can't do. So that's one of the concerns that I have. One of many.
One of the other questions that came up was for our police officers, impairment training. And it seems like there's two different tiers of training that officers can get to detect impaired drivers. There's roadside impairment driving training, and then there's a more robust one, which is the Drug Recognition Expert.
Right.
It seems like both of them are in short supply. It seems like they take a lot of time and energy to go through it with the man-hours and things like that. So that's true of someone that would be impaired from marijuana or for that matter, any of the drugs that are out there that are pharmaceuticals too.
Right.
I mean, it's, you know, the opioids and how many times have you gotten a bottle of medicine from the doctor that says, don't operate machinery and don't drive a car? And we don't have a test for any of that stuff, unless you start going the route of blood tests or saliva tests, which get into warrants and all kinds of other issues about civil liberties and stuff. So no, it doesn't seem like there's something that's really feasible and that works well for impairment driving, but that's true of a lot of things, not just the cannabis issue also. It's just a, a shortcoming in general, it seems, for the state when it comes to any type of impaired driving, other than alcohol, it seems.
So the, I talked to Chief Cloud about this, excuse me. And if there is a DUI stop and a drug recognition expert is available, then the cost is, for that DRE is covered by the state. If not, it costs us a thousand dollars to have that drug recognition expert come and make the evaluation. The internal training, become a drug recognition expert, would require someone to train for a month. And so it would be a very costly and time-consuming process to get that capability in town.
Well, it would be a good capability to have, whether the issue was cannabis or whatever.
Yeah, absolutely. You know, I had a discussion with a guy named Skylar Janest, who's the chief of the liquor control. I can't remember exactly what his title is. He works for Vermont Liquor. And we had a discussion about the problems with alcohol. And he said that his budget is two million dollars and he has twelve inspectors. And those twelve inspectors are responsible for inspecting over, I think he said, seven thousand establishments within the state in a year. So you do the math and that works out to five-hundred-and-eighty-two or three per person, per year, which means that if you divide that by, you know, twenty, twenty, two-thousand forty hours, I mean, that's gotta be a couple a day, three a day that these, these people have to. I'm not sure. I looked, tried to find what the, the inspection or compliance enforcement would be for the Marijuana Control Board, Cannabis Control Board. I think they have a similar budget and I think they were asking for the same number of people to do that inspection. So to me, Arnie, to your point, it's not just marijuana, but it's a whole bunch of other stuff that we are woefully underfunded and understaffed to keep tabs on.
The, the alcohol part of it, I mean, you're including every ma and pa, little store in Vermont that sells beer and wine, where I can't imagine there's really much issues. The big issues that seem like they come up most often are selling to minors.
Yeah.
And every once in a while you hear of stings and things like that where there, the people go in there and trying to do it and, you know, that's what they're doing. But as far as the regulation otherwise, it doesn't seem like there's that much involved in it in general anyways. So, I mean, they're understaffed, but I would think that if something, an issue came up that needed their attention, they would, they, they don't, they're there.
Sure, yeah, absolutely.
And we kind of, as a liquor control board, have the authority also to ask them to step in and do what they have to do if we see something going on. And I would think it would be the same thing for Cannabis Control Commission, which was one of the questions that came up or statements came up regarding Cannabis Control Board and what their power is and what their authority is. And it seemed like when that came up, that the impression was that we had a lot more power than we do. And in my mind, I don't think we have that much power because if it's the same as the liquor control that we do, it's basically signing off on the permits, asking the chief or the police chief, has there been any problems, has there been any nuisances, has there been any violations and things like that? And then we can act. And I would think that if that commission is set up the same way for the cannabis, it would basically be the same thing. It's not like we're gonna be able to review these applications and just say, no, you can't come or you can't come. I don't think we have that much power with that commission.
No, the only power we have is to sign off on, on licenses or whatever, but if, if whoever's applying for it doesn't agree with us, they can, they can appeal it and, you know, we really don't. We've got to have proof for a reason not to issue a license, basically.
And I would think that would be the same thing with the, with the Cannabis Control Commission, if we, if we establish one. If we establish one at a town level, we have that authority to handle those same type of problems that would come up with the Liquor Commission-type deal. Or if we don't, then it goes straight to the state and they're the ones that handle it. So that's what I, what I gathered from that discussion when it came to that Liquor Control Commission. Because the word was out there that it seemed like we had a lot more control than we do. And we, we do have some. And I mean, if, if somebody comes back and says, you know, they, they were selling to minors, there was people hanging out, they're, they're, they're staying open past hours and they're, it's causing an issue, then yes, we could probably act on that in whatever capacity to either revoke it or recommend that it get revoked or whatever the procedure might be. But all in all, I still think it's a pretty limited authority that we have when it comes to that type of.
And, Arnie, to that point, I don't think it's clear what our authority would be or what the process would be if somebody came and complained. What, you know, what would we do? What would the protocol be to do that?
Well, that, that's there. It's established. It would be the same type of thing, I think, that as a liquor commission would be.
Well, I, I didn't see where it's established. I mean, we got that Rule Two, thirty-page document to look at, and I have twenty-nine questions associated with that document because I, it's not all that clear, in my mind.
There was another question.
Pesticots.
Pesticots. And what I got from the document, I forget if it was in the rules or where it was, that it was basically regulated by the Department of Agriculture. it was basically regulated by the Department of Agriculture. And that it had to be disclosed when it came to the testing part, what pesticides and what kind you were using and what was going on. That's if you were using them at all.
Right.
So there is regulation, and there is oversight as far as pesticides go. And it's basically the same oversight and regulation that we use for agriculture in Vermont.
Right.
Which I think has a pretty good name, as far as being, not all of it, but a lot of it organic, a lot of it healthy. I mean, Vermont seems like it's pretty up and up when it comes to its agricultural endeavors and stuff. So I would think that that part of it doesn't concern me as much as some people that brought up, they were worried about groundwater, they're worried about the pesticides and the cannabis, and I don't see that as a big issue.
Well, actually, Arnie, and I'm sorry to keep jumping in here-
No, that's what we're here for, to have this discussion.
The question I have, excuse me, and Jeff can speak to this as well, relative to the aquifer. We have zero control over where a growing place would be, you know, a farm that, we can't regulate any of that stuff. You know, agriculture is a totally different animal compared to most of the other things that we can regulate. And so if somebody wanted to grow pot upstream of the Jeffrey Well Field and happen to use pesticides, even illegally, that could cause a major issue. We would have zero drinking water, because all of a sudden our groundwater would be contaminated. And we can't regulate that. We can't tell them, "No, you can't do this. You can't have any, we can't have any say in where people are going to grow," because that's totally out of our jurisdiction according to the state.
And that has nothing to do with the opt-in vote.
No, it doesn't.
Right.
No, I'm just saying, I mean, it's the same for any ag facility. I'm just saying that with other types of agriculture, there's protocol, it's already been developed, and there's standards and all that stuff. I'm not sure that we would have the same, I wouldn't have the same comfort level necessarily. You know, and the regulations as far as testing goes and what you can do and all that, there's always some room for interpretation of some of the regulations and some of the standards that are set that just need, I mean, I have questions about what those would be, because I don't think they're enumerated yet.
Well, you know, Lee, it sounds like if you're questioning the Department of Agriculture and agriculture in general in Vermont, which is, this is going to be under the auspices of, you're questioning it all.
Sure.
Not just the cannabis part of it.
Absolutely.
Which really has, like Heather was saying, has nothing to do with the decision that we're going to be making as far as opting in or opting out for retail.
Right.
So I mean, that's a serious issue to bring up about, you know, our wells and our drinking water and pesticides and everything else. If it's true and you have a deep concern about it, that would be for all agriculture.
Yeah, absolutely. You know, and-
And the only reason I want to be really clear is because I've heard there is some muddying of the waters. So this vote, I think we should be really clear, is only about opting in if we want our retail sales of cannabis.
I agree.
Right. And I think the other discussion is certainly merited, and, you know, it concerns me that we have zero say in all of that.
Right.
Having said that, that has nothing to do with what we're doing.
Right.
Well, so Heather, to your point, there's a 30-page document right here that was handed out as part of our package, Regulation of Cannabis Establishment. So this is what we would have to live under. And while only a small portion of it relates to the retail aspect of it-
Right.
I have a bunch of questions about the rest of it, because I don't think it's been thought out clearly or to the depth or level it needs to be thought out at the state level. So that's all I'm saying. You know, what we're dealing with relative to the topic at hand, whether we should allow retail sales or not, the voters are going to vote retail sales or not. That's, that's the question. But this whole conversation has raised a whole bunch of other issues in my mind, to your point, Arnie, that may not relate to the retail sales at all. But it's something that just causes me to wonder whether the state is actually had enough time to put into place the things that need to be put into place. That's my main concern.
So can I say something and let you see if this is what you think? I kind of get from you, and I might agree with you, that it's half-baked, or there's not enough of our, the fact that some of our questions can't get answered definitively, like boom, like the school zone, 500 this, that. It just makes me think that it hasn't been well thought out, like we're, it hasn't been well thought out. So that's what I'm hearing from you two, is what I think you're saying.
Yes, that's exactly what I'm saying. And again, I came up with 29 questions, some of which relate to what you just talked about. You know, the statement is that the board will determine, and I'm trying to find out exactly where that was, I think it was on page four of the document, where it says...
You in the rule, Rule 2?
Yeah, I'm on the Rule 2. There was something, I mean, they're talking about the inventory control or inventory tracking system. Oh, here it is, on page seven, which is not numbered.
[laughing]
But it's 2.6A.
See?
Well thought out.
Yeah.
It says cannabis establishments shall comply with the inventory tracking system in a manner determined by the board. And that raises a question in my mind, has that manner not been determined by the board yet? And that was one of the questions that I asked Nellie, and it's like, I haven't heard an answer to that. So I don't know what the answer to that. But to me, to your point, Heather, that's saying that we're getting way ahead of ourselves on this whole issue. All right, I'll shut up now.
I appreciate your comments. I appreciate yours, Arnie. I, you know, I think we followed everything that we've needed to do. We were submitted with petitions, it's on the, we're voting on it, we're doing what we need to do. And at this point, you know, it's up to the voters, right?
Well, sorry, go ahead.
I felt like we could wait. You know, I didn't feel, and I've heard some feedback that the select board's been kicking it down the road, and this and that. But I think it's a relatively big thing too often or not. And so I just feel it's a little unfortunate that we don't understand every nuance. And with something like this, it's always, in my view, sometimes nice to have other people make mistakes and then see what their mistakes are-
Yeah, exactly.
-before you do that, but you know, some-
Or in the same token, you can have other people reap the benefits of being the first to do something, too. I mean, there's two sides of everything.
At least.
When I, when I look through some of this documentation and some of the literature that's out there, for everything that I've seen, I could go online and find something that refutes it.
Right.
Which is, with the world we live in these days and stuff, and then you've got to look at the sources, and then you've got to look at how it generated the article, and where that came from, and where are they leaning? Are they leaning this way? Are they leaning that way? And you could spend two weeks trying to go through one document to see what's going on. What puzzled me a little bit is a document that I read the other day, Lee, and I've got to bring this up. It was from you, that you were quoting the CDC and using that as a resource for your argument, whereas a month ago, you said that you didn't believe the CDC about anything. So it kind of threw into question that whole document, and I was a little startled when I read that, and that's you were quoting them and using them as a resource, and a month ago, you said you didn't believe them.
Well, Arnie, to that point, that's not the only link that I, or only reference I used. So there were several others that supported that same point. I understand your point, and point well taken. I appreciate the feedback. I think that what we need to do as a board, since we're all going to vote our conscience, we're not going to make a vote here on, as this board. But the question is, do we just kind of throw up our hands and say, "Well, whatever the voters want," or do we come out and say, "We think we need more time," or "We think that the voters should have more information," or "We think that something should be done because we don't have all the information that we need in order to debate, make a decision." And I'm happy to come up with language for a resolution or a statement or something that we can put out as a board, if that's the way the board wants to go. But if the board wants to say, "No, we're done talking about this, we're going to let the voters decide," I mean, that's also an option.
And there's a lot that has been decided, like health benefits, health detriments of cannabis, okay? All of that, we can find resources and debate all day long. The state decided that. We've decriminalized it, we've legalized it, which, from my point of view, I think that that, I'm supportive of those decisions. This decision is, do we want cannabis to be sold in Chester? That, and that's it. So I think when we're discussing things, you know, a lot of it's, the horse is out of the gate, as far as anyone in Chester can use cannabis. So anyone in Chester can drive, not that I recommend it, using it. It's whether or not you want, and I don't think you should drive with funny prescription drugs either. But the thing is, or alcohol, I have to cover my bases. But the thing is, is the only thing we're debating now is, do we want it sold in Chester? And I'm, I'm, I wish that there was a little bit more of, the pros of doing it in Chester are boom, boom, boom. The cons are boom, boom, boom. And we haven't really focused on that. So, you know, there, there's no tax benefit unless we go to get a tax-
Local option.
Local option tax. Local option tax, which, you know, maybe we need to look at. We don't have time to look at that before the vote. But there's, so, so what are the benefits? I have some questions. If we vote, we all vote option in, yes, can, we can, we could have cannabis retail, every single retail establishment is the way I understand it, right? It's not like you can put limits on it. But they do have to come, just like the liquor board, and get a license, right?
The Cannabis Commission determines the amount of licenses and where they go and how they go.
And I didn't read any of Chester gets four, or six, or 12.
How they divide it, I mean, divvy it up and stuff, is, I don't know.
And there's a pro, you know, I've heard some people tell me, if we have this, they're going to come, they're, people are going to come, they're going to frequent our restaurants, and it'll be a draw. I think that that's hypothetical. It could be, it could be not. So you can see how, from my, from where I sit, I've listened to the pros and the cons, and there's so many different things. But it's now just up to what the voters, you know, do you want cannabis sold in Chester?
We don't have a choice if it's voted in. We don't have a choice if it's voted in.
Right, that's what we're voting on. Do we want, am I too simple, am I simplifying?
No, I just wanted to say that whoever's saying this, this is a draw to bring people into a restaurant. I think this community's been doing pretty darn good through this lately and through this whole COVID thing. I don't see any restaurants or, or eating establishments, or businesses for that matter in this town that are hurting right now. I think we've been doing pretty good. I don't think, that's not an excuse to have, to vote that way. I don't, and I'm-
I'm just saying what I've heard, Jeff.
Okay, I'm just saying, you know, just, I don't know. I think it's, we've got to vote on it, and we've got to deal with it that way. But the other thing I would say is, in my experience, it seems like the state sometimes pushes things through before things are thought out, or ways to figure out. And I can tell you that when they legalized it, that's all fine and good, but they didn't, they didn't hand down any real specific guidelines to law enforcement when they did that. So for a long time there, it was kind of up in the air, is what we were supposed to do or how it was supposed to be done. So I just think, there's an old saying, like, sometimes when every chip that falls and a whole stack goes with it, it would be nice to have, be a little more ready for what's going to happen, you know? I can tell you, I've been around this stuff almost all my life, a lot of friends smoking it, whatever. I've never smoked it. I don't put anything in my lungs that isn't supposed to be there. But that's their choice. And that's my big thing, that's why I was in the military. I believe, as Americans, we have a right to have our freedoms and our choices, but certain things shouldn't be pushed on to other people either. You want to, you want to have your choices, that's fine. But, I mean, it's legal now. You can grow your own, you know what you've got. You know, it's safer that way. And a lot of people aren't aware, but not too long ago, there's been three deaths in the state from people smoking marijuana, that were laced with fentanyl. They didn't know what they were smoking, you know? So that's just the side of the other coin, the other side of the coin.
And regulation, government regulation of cannabis, I would think would decrease the chance of those deaths, if you got it from a reputable-
People are still going to grow it and sell it, legal or illegal, you know, it's just-
Actually, what they're seeing in other states that have legalized it is that black market goes up, not down.
And there's some studies that say opposite.
No, I'd like to see those, Arnie, because I haven't found-
And the thing is, we could bring up what's happening all over the country, we could wait till something happens in Vermont, and we watch other towns and see what happened with them. It doesn't mean anything that's going to happen in Chester. I think our town would be fine with it. I think it would be able to handle it. I think people are used to having it around, growing it. It's legal now, it's allowed. I don't think government's job is to put restrictions on businesses. Once it's legal in the state, I have a hard time being, as a local representative of the local government, saying, "No, you can't do that." You were just talking about freedoms and saying that's what this country's about and stuff. Well, it's legal. People should be able to be free to do what they want to do.
In their own homes.
Well, if you want, if they want to sell alcohol, if they want to sell tobacco, they want to sell chewing tobacco, or if you want to go into the local convenience store and look at all the crap that's on the shelves that we feed our kids, that's just society. I mean, there's a lot of things in society that aren't good for us. It's legal right now, and if I think if it's done the right way, I don't see a problem with it. This is supposed to be an informational meeting, it's turning into a little bit of a debate, which is fine, because it's different views of different people that are from different parts of the community, and I think it's helpful.
Well, and I think Heather brought up a good point, is that this is what the discussion is all about. What's the pros, what's the cons? What can we do as the leaders of the town, if you will, to promote business and to make sure that our community is protected and flourishes? You know, to your point, yeah, there may be some benefit to having a retail establishment in town. To my point, I don't see that benefit. I see too many questions at this point. But that's why we're here, we're having this discussion, and I think it's a fairly amicable discussion. I mean, nobody's throwing stuff or storming out. So I think the point is that-
I'm not going to throw anything at anyone. Not tonight.
We should be having these discussions. Now, what does this mean for the voter who is trying to make up their mind, is this a good thing or not? How do we lead the town in this respect? Do we put out a statement that says, "We, as a board, don't feel we have enough information, we haven't had enough time to discuss this, we don't think it's right time at this point to approve this," or do we just say, "Nothing"? And I mean, that's, that's the question. We're talking about making a statement about masks and all that stuff, and, you know, maybe this is an opportunity for us to do the same thing.
We had trouble to get a mask mandate resolution going, and it was watered down till the end, where basically it turned into a recommendation, because we couldn't agree on a lot of things on it. I see the same thing with this. I mean, we have different views and different takes on this whole process and stuff. And I, and I still believe that regulating a business on a local level like this, that's legal in the state, is not the way to go. And I also think, no matter what Chester does, whether we opt in or opt out, it is not going to change one thing in this town, other than the fact that somebody might have to travel to the next one to buy cannabis. It's not going to change usage, it's not going to change all the positive or negative things that come along with cannabis. I mean, we could walk away and say, "Hey, we don't sell it in our town," but I think that's going to be the extent of it. It's just, maybe it'll make you feel better that you could say that, but I don't think it's going to change anything when it comes to the underlying issues, whether they're positive or negative when it comes to this, to this issue itself.
Well, and, and I don't understand the regula- Well, and, and I don't understand the regulation for voting. But if we vote, we will vote in a few days, and if it passes, we're in. And if it doesn't pass, we aren't, okay? But it doesn't mean we can't visit it again, meaning, we can visit it again, but the, the licenses that would have been issued will be grandfathered in. Or, we vote no, and we can look at it again next year. If the voters want us to look at it next year.
Those are.
So, I, I think those are the kind of things that, as a voter, I would want to know. Is, um, you know, what are we voting on? And, and maybe at the next informational meeting, we just have a few minutes to go, this is what the vote is. It's not, can you drive under the influence of marijuana? It's not, can you do, it's not, is marijuana good for you or bad for you? The only thing we're looking at is, are we going to allow to sell it in Chester?
And, and what you said is true. If it passes, it could be revoked at a future date. And if it doesn't pass, it could be brought up again to be revoted.
Right.
That's the impression I got with it.
That's my understanding.
I think that is.
And I, I also think that we've been given a lot of information. A lot of varying information. But we've also been given the rules and regs of a retailer selling in town of Chester. And it's pretty strict. I mean, you have to go. You know, it's not onerous. Well, that's, I've got a bad connotation with that. But it's, you have to be, you know, you follow this very narrow set of rules before it can happen, regardless of what anybody's vote is, or regardless of how you feel about it. So, I think it's, you know, you wait till the ballots come out, vote.
One, one point I'd like to bring up is, like, uh, every, everybody has a strong opinion on one side of the coin or the other of this, okay? That's fine. But, uh, I've had some pretty strong comments made towards me, because I'm not 100% back in this. I'm against small businesses and all this. I'm not. But, you know, people to decide, you know, whether to be against somebody or totally turn, turn your hearing off, because someone isn't 100% on thinking like you on this subject, is only gonna be detrimental to the whole community. We, we still need to work together on other issues. And, just 'cause I have a different opinion than, than somebody else, you know, I'm, I'm here for the good of the community, and I may not, you know, have the exact idea that you do. But, don't shut down on everything else. We need to work together on everything. Like, what's gonna happen to the green, and what's, you know, our businesses and all that? This is just one subject. Let's not let it spoil everything.
Well.
I agree with you there, Jeff.
Yeah.
And it's sad that sometimes people take it that, in that direction, where if you're against them, you're dismissed, and you're, you're put away, and you're forgotten about, and you're, you're, it's us and them all the time.
I always believe in agree to disagree. Okay, you disagree on this subject.
But the other thing that some of you have heard me, you know, lately say, is we always are saying both sides, two sides. This, if we come to a conversation and say, there's two sides, you're, that's polarizing us already. And I don't agree, I don't think, with anyone exactly on here. And I get resentful and a little nar, little errr, when we wanna put people in two categories. There aren't two categories on anything. There's multiple different viewpoints. So, I think if we try to start talking to people about all sorts of issues, and not think of it as them or us, or they're on that side and I'm on this side, you know, we need to, we need to come over the fences, and mend fences, and mend the way that we communicate, and respect each other's point of view. And, um, so, that, that's my saga, which I've been, I've talked about. Like, don't say two sides. Because, you know, I think there could be some people in our country, who, in our town, who want to polarize us. Oh, Heather, she's like that. Well, you know, you're missing a lot about me and everybody else if you're just labeling me and saying she's in that bucket, because you don't know. And I'm just using me as an example. And I don't know other people. So I would just encourage us to have dialogue. And with more dialogue, I think we can learn and understand about what our opposing views or different views are, and maybe my view will change. But if we can't communicate, we aren't gonna be able to do that.
I agree. I think that we need to be able to have, and we are having a conversation. We're not reverting to name-calling, we're not pointing fingers. I mean, this is very, it, it, it makes me happy to be able to have these conversations, even though I don't necessarily agree with the rest of you, or one of you, or two, or three, or whatever. It doesn't, it doesn't matter. Because at the end of the day, our job as the leaders of the town is to promote the well-being and the welfare of the town. And so how we do that, we have a robust conversation, and we say, I think we should go this way, and somebody else says, let's go this way, and then we figure out some compromise or some way forward.
And most of the stuff that we talk about can be very nuanced. So, hearing more about your views or Arnie's views is helpful to me. You know, I'm appreciative of many sides of the coin.
Yeah, and I don't think any one topic is gonna, gonna settle the well-being of this community. It all has to work together. You know, it's not just one thing. So hopefully, we can all, you know, give a little on this.
Well, and if it passes, we're gonna handle it. And if it doesn't pass, we're gonna handle it. For me, I feel it's out of my, you know, control here. If we were voting, then, like, as a board.
Be an interesting vote.
It would be an interesting vote. But we aren't. It's our community, so I'm looking for the community to let us know.
It's gonna be an interesting vote with the community also.
I just hope it doesn't polarize people too much. You know, it's, alright, so.
Some people are very passionate about this.
Sometimes it takes time.
I'm concerned, and I, and I'm, and I have an opinion, passionate. I've been around pot for a long time.
It takes time to settle things, you know?
We've got somebody who'd like to speak.
Okay, so.
We're, I'm done.
We're gonna open it up to some questions, I guess.
I won't say anything.
Bill?
Don't you say anything. Hi, Phil Lindsay. I had to chuckle, if you don't mind, about we could change this down the road if it doesn't pass, or it does pass. Kinda reminds me of a tax. We're only gonna have a temporary tax. I'm waiting for that to come off. But here's my question. I think part of the problem here is that the state has not given local government enough information. I say that because I know of two teachers that are involved in special education. I probably would have been in special education if I was a kid. Probably didn't play by all the rules.
Well, look how well you turned out.
Well, that'll be.
Get a little closer to the mic, Bill.
But one of the questions I'm asking here is twofold. Number one, is there going to be a warning on the retail packaging?
Oh, yeah.
I say that for somebody who smoked regular cigarettes for too many years, and suffered a medical problem, my own fault. I read the package, but I didn't pay attention to it. My concern is, we're not hearing from any of the educators on this issue who are dealing with children. Particularly for how about young mothers? Is there any effect on smoking on young mothers when they're pregnant? I've heard nothing. Is there, is there, is there any health problem that a young mother could anticipate because she's smoking? I smoked before I was pregnant, why not smoke now? And I don't say that that person has a, has a problem, but we haven't given any information from the Department of Health. I think the Department of Health owns information to the towns, what possible medical effects there would be. I would like to see that there be some sort of labeling on the packaging. The state has pretty much jammed us down, local government. They passed it without coming. Now they're asking you for the information, you're asking how you feel. I think it's actually unfair to place this on the local boards to make a decision anyhow. I am glad that it's gone by ballot, but I think much more information needs to be affected. Maybe we should invite the school, or someone from the school, to come into the R meeting, and hear it from an educational standpoint. I think it will be really a disservice to our children if we don't. Thank you.
So, Bill, in answer to your question, on page 10 of this 30-page document, there's a, a warning that's gonna be included, and, as well as labeling and all that stuff. And let me just read the warning for you, because I think it'd answer your question.
Well, it's good, because people need to know that.
Yeah. This is a cannabis product and has not been analyzed or approved by the Food and Drug Administration. For use by individuals 21 years of age and older or registered qualifying patients only. All caps. Keep this product away from children and pets. Do not use if pregnant or breastfeeding. Possession or use of this product may carry significant legal penalties in some jurisdictions and under federal law. It may not be transported outside the state of Vermont. The effects of edible cannabis may be delayed by two hours or more. Cannabis may be habit-forming and can impair concentration, coordination, and judgment. Persons 25 years and younger may be more likely to experience harm by, to the developing brain. It's against the law to drive or operate machinery when under the influence of this product. And that gives the National Poison Control Center a number. So that's a warning label on all the products, and then there's specific pictures that are designated relative to product packaging. So, that's in this 30-page document called Rule 2, Regulation of Cannabis Establishments.
I guess my, my response to that would be, that's a lot of information put on a little package. Thank you.
It's, it's the small lettering. It's the little, the fine print that always gets you.
They actually, they actually dictate the font size and the font, yeah.
Yes, they do.
Well, I just wanna say that I appreciate, I'm older now, and I appreciate a larger font.
Amen.
And it's age discrimination, I think, when it's not in a bigger font.
I don't know if she still wants to speak, but Linda Dyak had her hand up earlier.
Your hand up? Are you, are you still out there?
Uh, I'm still here. I think Heather kinda said what I was going to say, in that, um, you know, how best to handle this as a select board. My opinion, this is my opinion, is to not muddy the waters for the voters. That, that, that the town has issues, the select board has issues or questions about the agricultural aspect, the groundwater, et cetera, is all valid. And it's all something that could, could and should be discussed. And could and should be lobbied to the state for further clarity, further regulation, et cetera. But when you're discussing the retail cannabis vote, the water should not be muddied with other issues. It, it doesn't benefit the voters to hear questions about aspects that the town cannot, at this moment in time, control. Or have no say over. These are things that have been decided. And I just, I personally feel that it would, you, no matter what side of the issue you're on, pro or, or against, it would be helpful to the voters to have it, have that conversation kept to the actual issue at hand. Thanks.
Thank you, Linda.
Thank you, Linda. I appreciate that.
Is there anyone else that would like to comment, or has any questions? So the, uh, one of the issues that we haven't figured out quite exactly yet is that 500-foot thing. Whether it pertains to abutting properties, or just 500 feet in general. One thing I would like to mention, when it does come to that type of, uh, regulation, a retail establishment in, under our zoning regulations in town, retail is allowed in the Village Center, the Stone Village, and a residential 20, I believe. But in all those areas, it is a conditional use. So it's not automatically granted. It's not gonna be, you could automatically go somewhere and open up a retail shop, and especially a cannabis shop. It is gonna have to go through the process, and, which has to address neighbors, uh, traffic, and a bunch of other performance standards and issues that might come up. So there is some regulation. It is not the most strict regulation, but it does pertain to retail establishments, and none of them are an automatic given in any of those three locations. So it, it does fall under some regulation and some control that the town has as far as where that location might be.
And that rests on our zoning.
Yes.
And all the work that has gone on in the years to have an updated zoning, yeah.
And it's, it's too bad that the state made it impossible to single out cannabis retail, and they just associate it with all retail. It would have been nice to have a little bit of leeway where a town can say yes and opt in, but has a little more control on where that location might be. But we're not allowed that because of a state statute. Which is, here's, here's some power, but not enough power, the way I look at it.
I think the 500-foot rule is.
Yeah, that'll help.
There it is. I mean, that's, has to be.
That's help, but that's one of the few.
And that's, uh, to the schools. It's pretty clear here in Rule 2.
Yeah, Mike?
Scott Blair has his hand up.
Thanks, Sue.
Oh, hi, Scott.
Yeah, go ahead, Scott.
Hi, I just wanted to inform everybody, and I talked to Julian in email, that just, if you guys are looking for more information directly from the Vermont Cannabis Control Board, every Monday at 11 o'clock, they have a Zoom meeting that's open to the public. And they discuss a lot of these issues, and, like, for that 500-foot buffer zone, they discussed that last week. So just something for the public, and also for the select board to know. It's every Monday at 11 o'clock in the morning, so.
And Scott, they take questions from the public?
Yep, they do. They have an, they have an opportunity for citizens' comments.
Alright, thank you, Scott.
Scott, would you mind sending a link out to me anyway, if you don't mind?
Yeah, no, absolutely. I'll definitely do that.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
One little bit of information I would like to add. I got this email from Green Peak Alliance. And it's an organization that's associated with the Black River Community Coalition, the Greater Falls Connections, the Mount of Scutney Regional Commission, the Springfield School District, and they're also related, uh, connected with the Vermont Department of Health and the district offices of White River and Springfield. And on Monday, February 21st, from 6:30 to 7:30, they're gonna have a Zoom meeting. And it's basically gonna be regarding the retail cannabis conversation. And it's gonna be a public health perspective. And it's open to the public. They're willing to take questions ahead of time, so they could possibly answer some questions. I don't know what it's gonna be like, what it's gonna entail. I have any idea other than the fact that the related organizations that I saw with it are local, and they seem like they're relevant, and they know what's going on in our area. And, and also that the fact that the Mount of Scutney Regional Commission, which is our commission, is involved with it also. So it might be a good source of information. It might be a good place to ask questions, and to see their perspective, because their, uh, mission statement basically is to promote healthy communities, and to work to prevent substance abuse. Now, I don't know if it's slanted that way, or what it is, but they had some questions, uh, and some general observations they had. And also, one of the observations they had were some recommendations for communities that did opt in, to help them navigate the, the, the repercussions with youth and folks that would substance abuse, so.
And what time is that, Arnie?
It's Monday, February 21st, from 6:30 to 7:30. You could submit questions ahead of time, and you would, uh, go to their website, which is Green Peak Alliance. And I think you could request a Zoom link from there, or the information from there.
I got the same thing, Arnie, and I can email it to anybody if you're interested in it.
Thank you.
There might be some good information. I don't know what it's gonna be like, and what it's, what it's, what their, what their take's gonna be, but... They say it's a general overview of the Cannabis Law Act 164. The most up-to-date decisions out of the Vermont Cannabis Control Board. What a local cannabis commission is and what it can do, was another one of the topics that they have. And suggestions for towns should an opt-in vote pass. It seems like some, might be some good information there.
Arnie, you want me to email it to you as well, or you already got it?
Nah, I've got it. I've already signed up. No, I've got it. I've already signed up. Thanks.
Okay.
Anybody else have any questions, comments, or concerns before we move on? We'll be having our last meeting regarding this right after the town meeting on Monday, Monday evening. And that'll be the last part for the information. And then the vote will be on Tuesday. That's it? Nobody else has their hand up? I can, I can see that.
Yeah.
The next item on our discussion, on our agenda is discussion regarding our ARPA funds in your package. Julie, could you take this one for me?
Okay. In your packet is a, a list. This is just to, for purposes of, of beginning discussion. Certainly is not an inclusive list, you know, an all-inclusive list. These are projects that have been identified by department heads in the town and some from community members who have come forth with different things that they would like to see. These are, this is a list of projects. These are not necessarily all needing ARPA funding. Some of them are, are projects that are, we're trying to seek funding elsewhere. I'm trying to capitalize or utilize all of the state funding that's out there before we touch our funds. Not everything is, you know, fundable through a grant, but these are the projects that are out there. And so again, just beginning discussions, certainly not looking for any form of decision-making this evening. But I wanted to kind of get out there the, the process that the department heads has been through and, and this is.
And the costs are estimates.
The costs are estimates. Some are, some are closer than others.
Yeah.
Because, because we're in the middle of a grant and we've got an actual cost. Some I wouldn't even venture a guess because the project hasn't been identified yet.
And by the way, I didn't have time to add that up, that column, but it's over $900,000.
Well, over $900,000. And this is not an all-inclusive list, believe me. The department heads could add much more to this list of things that are needed for, for certain. But I think as things, as time goes by and, and things get funded through other sources, some things will get checked off the list. I, again, I don't think there's any decisions that need to be made anytime right off. As things get closer to the top priority list, you know, I'll bring them if. But the process can be, you know, I, I think it would be beneficial to have, you know, a, a public process, a community process about this is the list. So this is just a starter. I don't know how you want that public engagement to look like. If you have thoughts on that. But it should definitely be a, a very public process.
Well, and I think it would be nice to ask the public for, you know, it's great to have the department heads for sure, but to ask the public for other ideas.
Absolutely. And I've only gotten a couple, but I'm sure other people have ideas.
Because we could get some real creative things, like some of this list, we're going to have to get at some point anyway.
Correct.
Right?
Correct.
But this is a chunk of change that we could put into things that perhaps we could never do unless we had this money.
I would like to see it go to one-time purchases, not be used to offset, you know, not to buy, you know, fire department gear. I mean, we have to replace that every 10 years. You know what I mean? To go to something, like you're saying, to go to something that is unique and different and trying to make the money serve as many taxpayers as possible or as many residents as possible, not even just tax-based, like as many Chester residents as we possibly can.
I know we're in the middle of our winter and this has been a funky one, really freezing. But in the last spring, and I think you've had conversation to it, maybe we talked about it as a select board, a little bit about the dog park.
Yep.
And that's really been something that people have called me about.
Yep.
And I, I think it's something I'd love to explore.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Absolutely. And there are a couple of people working with Matt.
Oh, good.
On, we've given them a list of town property. And they're kind of exploring some ideas and they're going to come back to me when they think they've got some ideas and we'll present them. But, so there is a group working on that. But yeah, that's exactly it. It's just something that we wouldn't necessarily.
Just kind of enhance the town a little bit.
Absolutely.
People have come in with animals and think, want to walk them and want it in walking distance also.
Yep.
So that's great.
Yep.
You know, so if there's anyone out, any citizens that are hearing this or listening to this, if they have any suggestions or any comments they would like to make now or in the future, you know, drop a line to Julie at the town office with those suggestions or comments and we'll put them on the list so we can have everything to consider when it finally comes to that time.
And maybe in the spring.
Yeah.
We have a meeting that this is most of the agenda. So that we can just discuss more ideas and bring more people into the discussion.
Yep, absolutely.
Julie, have you prioritized these at all?
I have not.
Okay.
I can.
That would be very helpful, I think, just to see what you think. And then as we push it out to the public, you know, these are kind of our priorities and they may not line up with what the town's priorities are.
Although they say when you're brainstorming and you prioritize too soon, it cuts off the creative process. So that is what I would say is.
Of you taken, Heather.
No, no, it's true, though, in business, when you're thinking of things and the first thing the person says, we don't have the money for that or what's your prior, you know, that's the only thing that I would say, I would hesitate until we have a full list and have all the information to then prioritize. But that's just my point of view.
Well, and I can prioritize from department head's perspective on, on their department stuff. I certainly can.
But then we get to emergency shelters and.
Exactly.
We talked a little bit tonight about improvements on the green and outdoor space at the library and all those things are, this is a great guide.
Yep, exactly. This is just a starter.
Yeah.
This is not meant for decision-making. And again, as things get funded, I mean, a lot of these things are, there's things out there in the works to get funded through other sources.
Right.
So, yeah.
That's a good problem to have, trying to figure out how to spend a few dollars to benefit the people of the town.
That's right. Meter readers, though.
Any other comments regarding the ARPA funds? Nobody got their hand up? Nope. Next item on the agenda is to approve the grant resolution regarding the wayfinding grant. So that, this has to be approved by the select board and by the planning commission?
So the planning commission gave their approval. And so now it's your turn to approve me applying for those funds. This is to implement the wayfinding plan that was approved forever ago.
Forever ago.
Forever ago, it feels like. Anyway.
You have to change the year in it again.
Yeah, exactly. So, yeah, that's what this is about. I can answer any questions, but I've met with Patrick Olsted from SE Group. We've gone through the wayfinding plan, kind of picked out what we feel are priority signs within that plan. They were identified in the plan as high priority. We looked at high and medium priority signs right now. $200,000 is a good chunk of money, but it would not implement the entire plan. And I don't know that we want the entire plan implemented. We don't want to flood our town with too much signage.
Right. We've been there before.
Picking those priority pieces, which I've identified in the memo, but.
So the priorities you have is the village gateway signage?
Yep.
Signs that direct to the village green?
Yep.
And directional signage around town, Copley Parking, Pinnacle?
Yep. And then the kiosks. And then there would be three kiosks for pedestrian direction.
Yeah, we've talked about that signage directing people to the green for a long time because of the traffic that always turns.
Those are the things we had to fight to get the shop die and stay. Remember that whole debacle and I had to go to Montpelier? Yep. So those five signs are what was the impetus behind the wayfinding plan and the master plan in general. So those are critical signs. The gateway, the village gateway signs, we feel are critical as well because they are the signs that are going to, first of all, now see you're, you're entering the village limits, but also they kind of set the stage of, okay, this is a town sign. So when you see this type of sign anywhere through town, these are, it's a branding, without using the term branding. I don't want to use that term. But it marks a way and identifies that this is town signage, if you know what I'm saying.
So there's like one, four gateway signs?
There would be four gateway signs. Potentially, potentially the fifth. What we cut out at first was the gateway sign coming from Grafton. Because again, I don't, we got to get the costs of what these are. If their money allows, we'll add that fifth one. Then there are five signs, I believe, five signs that have the shop die and stay that direct that traffic as it's turning. So it gets the people into the village. There are three kiosks. And then there are several signs. I don't know the exact number, but that, you know, identify parking on the green, Copley Parking this way, visitor information at the visitors, you know, the visitor information booth. Those types of signs. You know, there's one that would be at the entrance to the pinnacle. You know, pinnacle this, this direction. Exactly. Some of those key, key signs.
What are the kiosks?
The kiosks are pedestrian signs. So, yep, they're pedestrian signs. There would be one out here on the village, on the green here, in the depot. One either by the info booth or on the green placement in, in the center of town will, will have to be thought of a little carefully. And then potentially, if money allows, the third one would be down at the new Copley Street Parking.
And so what's posted on those?
Yeah, I don't know what a kiosk is.
So it's, if you've ever been into like a mall or, you know, there's a, there's a directory. Our, ours will not have individual business names. Ours will have, here is the village laid out. Here's where you are. Here's where, you know, they're shopping. Here's where there's dining. But we're not going to list out each individual because then you'd have to change. Right. Here is where the, you know, the Pocket Park is. Here's a swinging bridge. Here's the Brookside Trail, that type of thing. And exactly how that looks, there's more to come on that, you know, as we're designing the signs.
At least I know what it is.
Correct. Correct.
Great.
And a pedestrian one, I know.
It's a pedestrian.
So do we need a motion on this resolution?
You need a motion and then you need to sign.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. Who has the louder voice?
Lee Dakin's, Lee Gustafson's the motion and Heather Chases the second to.
I was louder.
Accept this municipal resolution for downtown transportation fund. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
Is it too late to talk about the colors?
What?
Is it too late to talk about the colors?
You're not changing the color of the signs.
What color did we decide on? Never mind, never mind.
Purple, no. They're that beauty, yeah, this, this color along with the orange. No, they're that really beautiful, like a, like a blue, like a slate blue. That really, really beautiful color. You're not changing the wording on the signage either. We had to fight too hard for that.
But we voted on the color.
Not going on any of them. I don't care. I'm putting them up before you even decide. We can even get it in there. Who'd have thought signage could be so.
It's cold in here.
All good?
All good?
All good?
All good.
Sign sealed, delivered.
Future agenda items, new business. We have, well, March 2nd, the organizational and development review board. I think there's two positions on there.
Yep.
And one on the planning commission.
Correct.
Have we advertised?
It's advertising as we speak.
Thank you.
It's been advertised.
Yeah.
And paper of record.
And that'll be up again.
That's always a fun topic.
It's always a fun topic.
The state hasn't changed their mind about anything.
There is some legislation being reviewed.
Governments move slow. They're not tech savvy, I guess. Anybody, any suggestions, ideas for future agenda items?
Solar Farm is coming. Jim's reviewing.
Good.
Because that is this year, right?
We have the option this year. Yep.
As in 2022, when do we have to make a decision?
The end of 2022. I forget the month, but it's, it's the end.
Seven years, though.
The other thing, the other thing I'm wa, yes. The other thing I'm watching, though, is that there are, I forget the bill numbers, but there's a couple of energy bills coming through that I'm keeping my eye on. And one of them could potentially help us fund the purchase of that field. So I'm watching that closely to see, you know, to see where that's at, too. We won't know for a while, obviously. The other one, I actually want to talk to you about at some point, Lee, gets in, just so I can understand it better, gets into providing funding for municipality, for municipal-owned buildings, for energy audits on them, and then funding to implement fuel switching. And so, you know, I've read the bill. I'm kind of lost in the bill a little bit. So I've been trying to listen to the sessions to try to get a little bit out of them. But if that, there's a, a lot of money being proposed in, in that bill. And that may be where assistance with, you know, buying that field and then potentially switching some of the buildings to different fuel source.
In conjunction with that.
Yeah, maybe something that we could get funded. So I'm keeping my eye on it. We'll see.
That'd be an interesting partnership, wouldn't it?
Yeah. I don't remember. I, I can certainly email to you tomorrow. I've got them all written downstairs.
Can that go on this list?
Sure. Yep.
Well, anybody else? Anything? Next item is an executive session for the purpose of our town manager review.
I'm in trouble now.
I don't think there'll be any action taken at the end of this.
I'm not getting fired today.
All right, motion to go into executive session to discuss the town manager's evaluation.
So we don't have a repeat of what I did last time?
Everybody, everybody is here.
Yes, we're just going to close it off, Sue, because, yeah, everybody's here. We don't have to.
Okay. So I'll just end the Zoom?
You can.
Yep.
Okay. All right. Good night, everyone.
Bye, Sue.
Good night.